Well, good evening. Thank you so much for joining us. We are here at the beautiful 304 Collective Studios. And we are in week two of our city council candidate forums. I'm Jonathan Board. I'm the chairman of the Marion County Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, we're going to have another chat as we've done throughout the month of September. Be sure and check in as we continue these at 7:00 PM this week. If you missed any of the previous candidates, we encourage you to go back and look at those either on Facebook or YouTube. And we also want to remind everyone that when voting for city council, every resident of the city will actually vote for one member from each district. So it's important to be an informed voter. And so feel free to watch these and also chime in if you are watching and you have a question, feel free to make that known. Tonight, we are joined by current mayor Brad Merrifield from District Four. We want to make sure that everyone feels welcome. So be sure to let us know if you're out there. And Brad, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. It's good to see you again, Jonathan.
It's good to see you. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I'm blessed. I have a, I have a great family, beautiful wife I've been married to for 45 years. If you can believe it, you probably didn't know I was that old. But she's put up with me for that long. So, and helped raise a great family. We have three sons, Matthew, Eric, and Tyler. And like I say, I'm blessed to be in that situation. You know, so many people don't have that luxury of, of, of that. The, the other thing I wanted to mention to me, to you is that I've had an interesting set of job experiences that I think lend me to do what I've been doing, especially in the mayorship role over the last year and a half. So I've been in sales all my life, retail, wholesale, whatnot. I've also been in management in the, at the retail side. And on the industrial side, I've, I have my insurance license. I've had security license. I've, I've been an entrepreneur. My brother and I brought a pizza business to Fairmont in 1996 that's still going strong. And I have, I have rental properties. So my point of all that is that I can relate to a lot of people because I've been in their shoes in a lot of different situations. So when I'm trying to get their opinion or their concerns, it's not, it's not a stretch for me to, to reach out, you know, and understand a lot of what, of what they're talking about. So that's pretty much me in a nutshell.
Very good. Very diverse background. Well, so tell us a little bit about District Four.
District Four starts down on Washington Street near the Monongahela River, down by the paper office. Everybody knows where that is. And Washington Street's the street down below it. And it goes up over the hill and it takes in, it would go right at the state building, but then it would take in the right side of Pennsylvania Avenue, Miller School, going down that hill. But it also takes in the Jackson addition property, you know, off to the right. So going down Pennsylvania Avenue, that whole right side is, is my territory, our territory. And until you get to the Bellevue Bridge, and at that point, it opens up to both sides of the street and it follows Route 19 through Bellevue all the way until you get down to the bottom of Meredith Springs Hill. And that's where the city limit stops. But that's, that's our, that's our territory. And that's where I've resided for 64 of my 67 years is in that neck of the woods, so to speak. So very familiar with, with the most of it.
That's wonderful. It's a big footprint. Goes a long way.
It is. It is. A lot of good folks.
Yeah, wonderful. Well, why did you decide to run for city council?
I love Fairmont. I, I have, like most people, I have a lot of memories. I have a lot of frustrations. I see the potential. And because of that, I just wanted to get involved once I retired and, and make a difference. And the reason that I'm running again after four years in the last year and a half as mayor is I decided that I wasn't going to quit on the people that I'm working with on several projects and working for. So, so that was my determining factor is that there's still a lot to do. And we're heavily involved in a lot of it. And the learning curve, you know, for the most part has gone by the wayside as far as learning who the players are and the relationship building, as you know, Jonathan, on, on how you can actually have a better chance of getting some things done once you know where to take it and don't have to start on square one.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to backtrack a little bit on my district and tell you a little bit more about that if I, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, of course.
When you start down off of Pennsylvania Avenue and start at the, the old 612 MAC building, do you know where that is? Okay. And by the way, there's a group of us, the pastors group and myself and a few other people that are working to restore that. So if you haven't been there in the last week or so, check it out because the trees came down in the front, which now we can get insurance. But, but we have big plans on that as far as a, we haven't really named it yet, but the, whether it's multicultural, whether it's arts, you know, arts and humanities, but things for the kids to do that may not have the resources or be able to do some of those things and run it with volunteers and more like a life skills type thing. And then if you go on down, you know, Historic Woodlawn Cemetery, you know, the father of West Virginia is, and the founder of Fairmont buried there. All the way down into Windmill Park, which I don't know if you played ball out there, but I sure did as a kid.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And a lot of nice, a lot of nice houses and a lot of people that have a lot of pride. And they love their community and, and they keep their property up nice and whatnot. And then when you get down into Bellevue where I live, one of the things down there that not a lot of people remember, because you know, I'm older, I guess, but the old BNO Roundhouse used to be down there where, and that's where they would turn the, the engines of the trains down there off of Murray, if you go down and around. And it was, it was interesting as a kid to go down there and watch them turn the engines around and stuff. And just several, several other things, some restaurants, but it's the same kind of community. It's an old railroad community. But same thing, people like their neighbors, talk to their neighbors for the most part, you know. And so just wanted to give you a little, you know.
I like that.
A little picture of, of where we live and where we, where we hang out.
A bit of history too. That's good.
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah.
That's important. That's important.
We've got a lot of that in Fairmont.
That's wonderful. Well, so you mentioned some of the, the past. So let's talk a little bit about the future and maybe some of the challenges that you see with Fairmont and maybe some of the things that are imminent challenges or future challenges and, and maybe some ways that you see fixing or solving those problems.
Well, the challenges are far reaching, obviously, because you can always improve on whatever you're trying to do. But basically, when I saw the question, I broke it down into economic challenges, social and political challenges. And under the economic challenges, you know, talking about jobs, housing, supporting your local businesses, things like that, that, that it's, it's a challenge that we always, you know, we're trying to recreate or rejuvenate downtown Fairmont. And there's just always a lot of ideas out there. The problem comes into, okay, how do you get from here to there? You know what you want. How you, how are you, how are you going to do that? You know, where's the funding going to come from and who's going to be a part of that? The social challenges, we're all well aware of, you know, the social situation right now and all, a lot of the tensions going on. And I've said this before, and it just makes sense to me that it boils down to a couple of things. That if each of us would try to understand people that don't share our viewpoints, because it's certainly okay that we disagree. I mean, that's the freedom that we have in the country and it's going to happen and it should happen. But when you don't agree with somebody, at least in an effort to try to reach across and get something done, at least try to understand people. Okay. And not go in with a closed mind and whatnot. And, and even if you can't understand, at least respect the other person. At least that. That's the, that's the bare minimum. And I think if, if we, if we follow that guideline, as simple as it may sound, I think we won't get hung up so much and we won't get into such, you know, fits of anger or disagreement that we might actually come to common ground and get some things done. And with the political challenges, one of the things that you here talked about, and I've, I picked up on it in the beginning of, of serving as mayor when we had some meetings with different folks, is there's a lot of good people doing a lot of good work in Fairmont. But a lot of us have worked in silos. And you know, how much stronger we would be if we would just wrap our arms around the whole group of us and go together. And why do we do that? You know, some of us are concerned about maybe who gets the credit or, you know, throwing blame and negative situations, whatever, you know, there's, there's reasons for that. But there's so many more reasons to do it the other way, you know, if we would just chill out a little bit and get over ourselves to some extent and work together. Because, you know, the old story of how much more powerful the, the group of horses or oxen are than the sum total of the individual ones. So, so that's the way I look at it. And what I try to do on a daily basis really is look for opportunities. Because I'm a firm believer that we should embrace challenges or as opportunities, you know, and, and take it as a nugget. Because what we would be doing is working on something that somebody has a problem with, where a group has a problem with. So let's take that and see what we can do with it while we work with the, you know, other folks, work together. And then you're that much stronger than you were in the first place, you know, because you've come out with it and you've solved an issue for somebody. And there's nothing stronger than getting, getting a friend that fixed something I'm having a problem with that I perceive is broke. Yeah.
Well said. Very good. Are there any initiatives or things that aren't currently happening in Fairmont that you would like to bring to the table where you to be reelected?
Well, some of the things, and when you say they're not currently happening, I also put in there things that might be happening, but they're not happening fast enough. I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm an anxious person. So I'm not, I like to see things moving a little faster. And sometimes working within a, you know, the system of government, it slows things down sometimes. Not, not because of anybody's fault. That's just the way the process and the rules and the laws are. But some of the things that, that I hold very important is more downtown housing, apartments, loft apartments, to bring people to living downtown. And, you know, I know people say, well, why would they want to live there now? Well, you know, is it the chicken or the egg? But, but here's, let me finish though. The advancing the arts, okay? Because I think Fairmont eventually will become some sort of a artsy type community. We won't have Hartley's Department Store and Jones Department Store. That day's, that ship has sailed. But you know, when you have new businesses like the young lady that opened the health food store with the shakes, I mean, that's gone gangbusters. If we were sitting here several months ago, asking that same question, which one of us would say, well, we need that? Well, neither one of us. But guess what? We need that. And we need more like that. And, and so the, you know, the developing of the 612 MAC to continue that, I know it's barely started. But I think that's, that's going to be a big deal. Basically, what we've got is a jigsaw puzzle. So we're trying to put those pieces in, but they're not all pre-shaped perfectly. You have to see what's, what's there for the taking. Let the game come to you, so to speak. Getting the students involved from Fairmont State is something that we made some progress on. We've made a lot of good relationships, but then unfortunately with COVID, we had to cancel two events that we had scheduled for when they came back to school. We're, we're working on putting in a warming shelter for the homeless during the cold weather. It's, it's going to be done before the winter. But, but here's the point I wanted to make is that when you talk about downtown housing, what do we need first? You need to look at these all simultaneously. You can't just do one and not the other. You have to try to, to the best of your ability and what you have to work with. You have to try to bring them in or at least advance the puck, so to speak, on all of them at once, if you can, you know. So that's the answer is to let it culminate, you know. And so sorry for such a long answer.
No, that's good. Long answers are good.
Okay. That's not what my wife says.
Fair enough. Well, so moving on, obviously, a few years back, the HRC came back in. And there's, there's been some challenges with that, integrating that. How do you see that moving forward and what their role might be?
Well, I think that it's going to move ahead quite nicely. I've had a conversation with, with the president just the other day. And, you know, and it was mentioned to me that what I was thinking about, they've already talked about. And what it was is it had to do with the 612 MAC and whatnot. And I was thinking of programs. And I was thinking about an anti-bullying campaign. And I said, here's going to be a center where we're going to have the rooms and the volunteers, you know, hopefully to run that. And how nice it would be as, as one of the topics, you know, to, to teach or inform kids and, and about the bullying. Because my opinion, and I'm not an expert or a doctor or anything, but if you can make headway on the bullying, I think you help resolve or at least improve a lot of the situations that would come to the Human Rights Commission. If you, if you work on that part of it, rather than working from the top down. And, and even if we could have a safe place, you know, for, for kids, I'm just, I'm very passionate about the anti-bullying segment. And, and I look at the, the HRC as being the group that can really take that ball and run with it along with all of our help.
Wonderful.
So I'm excited about it.
Deal with some of the issues early before they become big later.
Yeah. Yeah. And explain the implications. And if you can ever get to the point where bullying is not cool to everybody, I think then you're getting somewhere. I know, maybe that's a pipe dream, but, but I think, you know, if all of us work on it, at least we can advance, you know, and improve upon it. So.
I agree. I agree. Very good. Okay. So is there anything that we haven't covered before we get into some of the audience questions?
Just a couple of things, if you don't mind.
All means.
Some of the things that I enjoy, or one of the things that I enjoy the most, being the mayor is, and we've just started doing this more, but we were doing a little bit of it before, is reading the proclamations. And we've had veterans coming recently. I don't know if you've seen that. I mean, veterans from all over, local veterans and, you know, war heroes and, you know, one in particular. But to honor somebody that has sacrificed to the degree that these veterans have, so that we can do what we do, is just something that's so touching. And it's, it's, I just feel so strongly about that. And, and that's the reason that I coordinate the Rotary Flag Program that you see in Fairmont, where you see the flags up now and then they'll go away and all that, is just honoring veterans is something I feel so strongly about. I, I'm not a veteran, but I couldn't have more appreciation for people. And it's a small component of what we all can do to try to do, you know. And I was just looking at my notes here because I'm old, you know. But other than, other than that, I don't think I've, you know, the one thing I would like to mention that I think is helped me and helped us to get some things done is the relationships. Because when I first started, it's like, we talked about the silos. So you had Fairmont State University here, here's the city, here's the county. You know, here's the high-tech consortium, here's the Chamber of Commerce. And guess what? They all did good stuff, but nobody talked to anybody. I mean, you know what I'm saying? As far as collaboration. And I think there's been a network of collaboration between all those and joined now by the pastors alliance that we've been working with, that's actually going to help us on the 612 MAC and, you know, that we hold regular meetings. You know, the, the Visitors Bureau, the news media, the students. I mean, all these are so critical. The police, the homeless shelters, the United Way. With, without, you know, coordination of all these folks, it's always going to be hard to get certain things done. And it's just amazing to me though, once you get that ball going, you get, you get one group looking out for the other and say, hey, I saw this or I learned this. You may want to check into this or what, what can we do to fix this or to help with this? And then, and then, and then you have real fun. So I think that's, I think I've, I've rambled on as far as I can without some help.
That's great. That's good. So we have some questions that have come in from the community.
Sure.
And one is, in your opinion, how important is citizen involvement? And how would you encourage more citizen involvement, presumably in, in city government?
Citizen involvement is really the key to everything. I mean, who, who are we trying to do this stuff for? I mean, you know, I mean, again, the power in numbers that we taught, that I've been talking about in the collaboration. And I probably left that off of the list, you know, in error that the more, if you've got an idea or if you have a concern, or if you know of something that's not right, get involved to the extent that you can, you know, at least, at least do that. And even if you can't physically get out there, if you see a project going on and if you're, and if you're in a position, write them a check. Let them, you know, help them out that way and feel good about that. But if all of us, I guess if all of us picked up all of our, our garbage and, and kept our weeds under control and cut our grass, we'd be a sparkling, sparkling place, wouldn't we? You know? So you don't have to do that much, but do what you can, you know, and not do nothing. And never, ever say that my part doesn't count. Because I think we learned in the last election with two districts that came in by just a handful of votes on each side, which has never happened before, that, that everything that we do does count. And, and I'm big on letting, and letting, and make sure everybody's heard. I mean, anybody that, you know, whether I agree with them or not, it doesn't matter. I want them to, to have the chance to, to say what they think and, you know, and have a conversation. So, but it's, it's key. If you get that, you're, now you're really rolling. Right. You know, so you'll never probably have 100%, but that's okay. How close can you get to that 100?
All right. Very good. Very good. So we have another question. And this is, do you feel city council members should be held accountable for social media posts that they make regarding controversial issues? Or I guess you could expand that to issues in general.
Well, yeah. And, and I think they are. Because they have said it and it's out there. And how are they going to get rid of it? So, so it's attached to them. But as far as, if the question is, should council do something? Or, you know, I don't know what extent the question was, but, but yes, I think that you, I think people, all people should be held accountable for everything they say against somebody, you know, because, because they said it and it didn't need to be said in most likely. So, you know, the way we were brought up, you know, there's, there was consequences if you, if you did stuff like that. Now, we didn't say it on a computer, but, you know, they may have heard us say it in the backyard.
Public statement is a public statement.
Well, and it's an unnecessary one. I mean, how are we ever going to get to the part where we're understanding and respecting people if we're calling people names? I just, I don't see how you can get from here to there. I mean, I mean, if you have that opinion, fine, keep it, keep it to yourself. But the thing about being on council or in any office is you can't separate, you can't undo that, okay? You are, and the problem that some people, and we all run into it because we go in there as individuals, but then we become something else and it doesn't dawn on us. We are speaking to represent, representing the viewpoints of everybody that voted for us. I mean, that's a pretty big deal. So if you think that through, you probably wouldn't say as many things if you were true to your word about, you know, filling your oath or whatever you want to call that. But heck, yeah, we all, without question.
Very good. Next question in is, what accomplishment are you most proud of during your four years serving on council? And if elected for four more, what do you hope to continue or begin?
Well, I think I went through the list of some of the things that I'm very passionate about. And let me just say that some of these, with the 612 MAC and of course, the warming station will be done quick and easy, but some of these other things that, you know, working on the board at Woodlawn, things like that, Main Street Fairmont, these are things that I'm going to continue whether I'm reelected or not. It's not, you know, it's, I mean, it makes it a little easier, especially if you're mayor, to get a meeting, but as far as the passion to do the work, I mean, that doesn't change. Most proud of, I don't know, I have a hard time narrowing it down to one. I guess building the relationships that I've built with all these partners that load, they load me up ready to get things done on the behalf of the people that elected me. Because it took a year to get that done, you know? You can't just barge in and tell everybody they need to like you or something. But I'm proud of the fact that we hired an excellent city manager. Nothing against you because you were an excellent, excellent candidate. And I'm not saying that because you're here. I can give you a reference if you need it, that I told somebody else that the other day. But we had three strong candidates. And we hired an excellent city manager. We supported the pay increases for police and firemen of where they weren't being paid a wage that was competitive with surrounding towns. And that was very important because we would bring them in and pay 16,000 or 18,000 and train them and they'd go somewhere else. But I think the friendships and the relationships, I can't get away from that, you know, with the Pastors Alliance, people that I met when the Will Graham thing was working, and these are people now that I work with on other projects and things. They don't go away.
One thing leads to another.
It does, it does. So I wouldn't, I don't think I could state anything that I'm actually more happy about, more proud of than the relationships.
Very good. Well, on relationships, we have another question. What would you say to other public officials to encourage them to follow our example, developing those relationships and to become as involved in the community as you are?
To other public officials? Is that the question?
Other public officials.
What would I say to them to get them to spend more time?
Take on your model of relationship building.
Well, first of all, you need to understand that I'm retired. So some people, I know that doesn't have to do with the relationship building. I think I have to go back to the same thing, that if you're in a mode of trying to understand other people and their issues and concerns and respect that person regardless, I mean, you're very good at it, too. I mean, you just, it's, but you have to want to do that. You can't, you just can't go in with an open mind or with a closed mind and figure somehow you're going to circumvent that. People have real issues, and if you can't understand and respect theirs, then what right do you have to assume they're going to respect yours? I mean, what makes me right and you wrong? You know, it's somewhere in between, maybe. Depending upon the issue. But I don't know if there's a trick to it other than you just have to want to do it and you have to care about people. You have to care about what you're doing. You have to have a passion, I think. So if it's just a job, then it's probably going to be cumbersome, you know? Does that make sense?
I think that's very well said.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think that accomplishes all of the questions from the audience. So Brad, Mayor, thank you so much for being with us tonight on behalf of Tina Shaw, our president, and all of the good folks here at 304 Collective. I want to thank you all for joining us, and we look forward again to seeing you tomorrow.